Good evening, it is now 6:30 and I will call to order the Monday, January 11th, 2016 Burnsville Planning Commission. Thank you Commissioners for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Staff, thank you for attending. Our first item on the agenda is the adoption of this evening's posted agenda. Commissioners, does anyone that has any emergency items or changes to the agenda? None?
None.
Staff?
None from staff.
Hearing no changes, I would stand for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Levy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, and the motion carries. Second item on this evening's agenda is approval of the minutes from the December 14th, 2015 Planning Commission. Commissioners, are there any changes to the posted agenda?
Minutes.
Minutes. I knew that, I was just asking you. Staff, any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Minutes.
Two minutes.
It's gonna be a tough night. With that, I would stand for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Thomas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
One abstained.
Oh, and one abstained. And the motion carries. The third item on this evening's agenda is a public hearing for the City of Burnsville ordinance amending Title 10 zoning chapters 7, 8, 12, 12B, 20, 22A, 22A1, 22B, 22C, 24, 26, 26A, 26B, and 28 of the Burnsville City Code to update and add provisions for solar energy systems. Deb, I read the entire thing to give you a chance to get to the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. You have the floor.
Thank you. For members of the audience and the commission, solar energy systems are an area that the city has been looking at for about the past year. The Planning Commission has held a number of work sessions along with the City Council to discuss these. And the reason that we are bringing this out for an ordinance is that solar energy systems are very prevalent and becoming even more so and supported by the State of Minnesota, Metropolitan Council, and other organizations. And it's becoming a much more realistic alternative for folks because the costs associated with it have come down and the, there are various number of applications that can be used. The current ordinance that we have is about 30-plus years old and it just has very minimal standards related to solar energy systems in residential districts and commercial and industrial districts. With the outcome of the reviews done by the City Council and Planning Commission, the direction was that in respect to solar energy systems in general, the city wants to be supportive of those systems and allow people to utilize those systems. However, there are some areas where performance standards should be incorporated to provide for basically protection of views of certain properties and different standards related to if it's a building-integrated-type solar energy system versus a rooftop system or a pole-mounted system or ground-mounted system. So, in taking the suggestions we've received through all of the various work sessions and meetings, staff has drafted proposed ordinance which basically starts out with the Minnesota Pollution Control or state model ordinance. And the Planning Commission has had that, we've passed that out in the past. We kind of started there and then took a look at what other local and state agencies are doing with regard to solar energy systems. And in addition to that, we did national research as well. And the idea in front, or for the ordinance just very generally is that the City Council direction was that we want to encourage solar applications, not put up roadblocks where we don't have to, and to make sure that for residential areas, for example, that we take a look at what impacts could be to adjacent properties. And the council was fairly clear that they felt that rooftop and building installations were okay in residential districts. Where they're a bit more concerned is with other types of constructions. They did not believe that pole-mounted solar energy systems were appropriate in single-family, low-density residential zones. They did think that there should be an opportunity for ground-mounted systems, but they wanted to make sure that those were screened from public view, from adjacent properties, and from the right-of-way. When it comes to the commercial and industrial zoning districts, the city does have a couple of installations. One received planning and development approval and is located at the Minnesota Valley Transit Station right on 13 at Nicollet. That's an example of one that was done a number of years ago and those systems, as I said, have become much more advanced since that time. But Planning Commission and Council seem to feel that in commercial and industrial districts, as long as the system, if it's pole or ground-mounted, really is not visible from any other properties, just do it. Just allow them to install those with a permit. They did not have many issues with regard to wall-mounted or roof-mounted facilities, but did feel that there should be a landscaping component if we have ground-mounted systems that are located in the front yards or if they can be viewed from other properties. And they also wanted some restrictions if they could be viewed from the rear yard, side yard, that there be some screening. So what we did is attempted to put together a first draft of the ordinance. And we outlined definitions, which are the majority of the ordinance actually. And these definitions are meant to apply only to this section of the ordinance. Otherwise, if there are other definitions in the zoning ordinance, they would take precedent or if it's not defined, just look at the general definition based out of a dictionary, et cetera. With the ordinance provisions, what we looked at are really standards related to the four different types of systems: wall-mounted systems, roof-mounted systems, pole-mounted, and then ground-mounted systems. So we tried to work around those four major categories of systems and then take a look at how to accomplish those overall objectives for residential, commercial, industrial properties and identify. There are provisions related to height standards, to location standards, where various types of installations can be located, setbacks for systems. Primarily, the ordinance is written so that solar energy systems are considered to be accessory uses, so not the principal or only use on a property. And the council was fairly clear in this also. Because Burnsville is fully developed and we really do not have much agricultural land, they did not feel that community solar gardens, you know, a ground, huge ground installation was really appropriate for Burnsville. So that type of system is not allowed currently and would continue not to be allowed under the new ordinance as well. You would be able to do community solar with rooftop installations, provided that those can be worked out with the individual private property owners and that they met screening requirements for rooftop installations. We did try to add or to deal with the aesthetic component of these. When we brought this to Planning Commission, we'd looked and some other communities had guidelines, like visual guidelines, for the types of applications. We also found some ordinances that were a little bit more specific, where you could put the language in ordinance form as opposed to just a visual guide type of a thing. So we added those provisions and they're under the aesthetics section. We also added a section for buffers. And buffers are intended to be different than our screening standard. This is one of the elements that we have some issues that need to be worked out based on some of the Planning Commissioner's input that we've received to date. And the idea was, again, that council and Planning Commission felt it's okay to have these, like in commercial-industrial areas, but they should look good. So how do you come up with provisions to look good? Screening is a standard where you, at least in our ordinance, where it's 100% screened, you cannot see through it. And that was a result of a court action a year or two ago that the court determined that the way Burnsville described screening, we included it as an opaque, so you couldn't be able to see through it. The court did not understand opaque, so we had to change the ordinance to specifically state in areas that are screened that they're 100% screened from view. Screening was not really ever intended to be total 100%, but to deal with the court and to deal with the ability to enforce our zoning regulations. That's what we did. We also added provisions that allowed garbage cans, for example, that are used by the general public, say, at a gas station, in a public park, those types of situations, that those would not have to be screened. So with the screening and the aesthetics and landscaping, we tried to come up with something that would provide for aesthetics and view. But there are a number of places where there's some conflict in between those, the screening and the buffer provisions, and more clarity that's needed to actually define, you know, what do we mean by buffer versus screening, et cetera. So that is an area that we will definitely look at and bring back to the Planning Commission for your review. One of the other items that I wanted to address is that the ordinance does have provisions and exemptions for government-installed or public-installed installations. And the question came up is, well, what if we get an installation on a school property? It's in a residential zone, most of the schools are on our one, single-family zone properties, so can the school put this in and not have to provide screening, buffering, et cetera? But yet, on the other side, you have a residential lot and they need 100% screen there. So the ordinance currently does not distinguish between governments. So basically, that situation could arise. One of the things that we have suggested is there's a possibility of changing that to instead of being a government jurisdiction, to specify that it's an installation, if it's an installation by the city, state, county, or federal agency, then those would be exempt from the standard. And then we'd have to deal with what they do in terms of schools and other types of uses. There are a couple of things, we can definitely address that in the solar ordinance, but we do also have on the Planning Commission's work plan an item to take a look at other uses in the single-family zoning district that don't necessarily fit in with the standards of that district, such as the schools would be one, churches, some of these other larger-type facilities that have impacts and implications more toward commercial-type of application than a single family. So we can address this in this ordinance. We can address it as part of that future work plan item or look at it in both areas. But just, we'd be looking for the rest of the Planning Commission input on this, but that is something that currently the ordinance does not really call out. So if a school wanted to do something, they would not have to put in screening, et cetera. They would be considered exempt, the way that this is written right now. There are a number of areas too where we try to identify the types of standards that apply, just the way that the ordinance is constructed. Started out with looking at standards and then how they apply to specific applications, like height standards, location standards, setbacks, et cetera. This works in some ways, but where it doesn't work is that it is more confusing, seems to be confusing to some of the commissioners. And then also, there are areas where we have one item, like a setback provision, for example, that applies to a certain installation but not another, like a setback might apply to your pole installation but not a ground-mounted, vice versa. And there are a couple of areas in the ordinance that have been noted where there are conflicts between those. So we do need to, as a staff, go through those and make sure that those are consistent as well. One of the other questions that came up relates to the Development Review Committee. And the city, we do have a Development Review Committee. This is established both in the zoning ordinance and City Council policy. And the Development Review Committee is set up to be administered basically by the Planning Department. We coordinate that committee. And it's involved with all development review projects that would be coming before you and the council, for example. And they take a look at different elements like natural resources. Our city engineer, Ryan Peterson, is on that group. We have fire department personnel on that group, police department personnel, utilities, parks, and even Chris Slaney with IT and Communications is on that Development Review Committee. So we meet basically twice a month to review projects. And then the Development Review Team actually puts forth the recommendation. We have a staff recommendation to Planning Commission and Council. It's really coming from the Development Review Committee as opposed to just the Planning Department or this department or that department. It takes into account everybody's positions and issues and conditions that relate to a project. In other parts of the ordinance, we do have provisions where there is some flexibility, I guess, in how the provisions could be interpreted. We allow for the Development Review Committee to review those. And if the committee feels that it's okay to move in one direction, they would be able to do that. If the Development Review Committee has a different opinion, you know, that looks like something that really needs further review through Planning Commission or council, then the application automatically comes to Planning Commission for those types of reviews. But we did put that in here mainly to deal with, again, some of the more things like the, what actually consists of aesthetic, you know, types of improvements and things. There are a couple of elements in there, but that whole relationship to the Development Review Committee, that's what this is related to. One of the other items that came up was in regard to, there's a provision related to solar panels and impervious surface. And for that, our consultant engineer, Brian Hill Gardner, had worked, their company has worked with several communities that are developing these ordinances at this point too. And that question has come up related to if you have got these in shoreland districts or those types of things, what should that impervious surface coverage be? And they were able to work through with MPCA that has a guideline for 50% impervious surface when you're dealing with ground installation or pole-type installation. If you're putting it on a roof, it's already 100%, but it's really intended to provide for an element of impervious surface for these facilities, considering that the panels themselves, you know, usually are tilted, so there can be some water penetrating through, but some that is impervious. As to where that 50% came from, it's just the suggestion that MPCA had. I don't know of any actual studies or other data. In fact, the other ordinances that we've looked at, at least up to this point, did not have really anything related to impervious coverage. I think with that, that generally outlines some of the issues. I don't know if I covered everything appropriately or if you'd like to go through it, but we do have, do have the ordinance up here, available at City Hall, and then it's on the screen tonight. And as indicated, we fully anticipated that we would need to come back to Planning Commission, but this is the first shot. And what we're looking for tonight is input from the commissioners as to if we missed considering something, if something, some things don't make sense to you as you're reading through it or reviewing it, any inconsistencies, those types of things. So really, we'd open it up for comments from the entire commission.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. I appreciate your background in summarizing that. So Commissioners, I think we can start with comments.
Do you have some to start with?
I was gonna let everybody go. Commissioner Benkey, you can start.
Okay. Ms. Garros, thank you. Yeah, I basically went through it with the idea that I'd put several hats on as I went, one as a designer, one as a developer, and then one as a city representative. And I tried to read through it and sort of test it under all three of those. And, you know, I don't know if I'm gonna duplicate some of the same things again, but I just felt that there are definitely some areas here that we don't quite have right. I think the whole idea of the community solar for start, I mean, so basically, as an accessory use, I did see that as one of the first definitions here. Solar energy system designated as secondary use to existing buildings. So, and then where does that come under the ordinance as to what's allowed or what's not allowed as an accessory use?
Accessory uses are defined in the ordinance basically as those uses that are subordinate to a principal use. And that's defined by, actually, the land uses in every zoning district has a list of things that are allowed.
Okay.
So what we are proposing to do is to, the end part of this ordinance, all those end pages that have those citations, those would be adding solar as an accessory use that's allowed, as opposed to a principal use of the property.
Okay. I guess the concern on my end was that while we have no land for a community garden, we certainly have a significant amount of roof in the city that we should make available and we shouldn't restrict that.
Correct. And as an accessory use, those rooftop units. Yep. Fall right into that, yes.
I'm gonna jump a little bit back and forth between your summary under the attached ordinance and the ordinance itself. And I'm struggling a little bit with pole-mounted solar energy are not allowed on residential lots, under the premise that if somebody was to have a completely screened site, why would we be telling them they can't have that?
That was...
I'm thinking of southwest Burnsville as a primary example. I mean, I'm sure there might be other areas where backyards might already be done. So I'm just wondering, and I'm looking at it as where can we be permissive and where do we really need to be restrictive?
Actually, that comes from the City Council directly, that they did not feel that pole-mounted systems should be on residential lots at all.
Okay.
If that's something that the commission feels differently, we certainly can put that in as, you know, a provision to allow them as long as they're not visible from adjacent properties. That's up to the commission and really why we're here.
Commissioner, I think we have two different options there. I mean, A, it gets difficult from a residential zoning and how you designate, like if we talked about just southwest Burnsville.
True.
Because quite honestly though, if someone wanted it, it was a situation, it would be relatively, it could use, it could be a conditional use permit.
Yes.
They'd have to go through the process.
Correct.
We have to kind of think both ways. And that's a good discussion about how do you limit it in some residential neighborhoods versus other parts of the city where that may be the point.
Exactly. And I think the issue is if it says specifically they're not allowed, that doesn't let someone from there know that if they want to go through the process and they want to document and demonstrate that they meet the standards, that they can move ahead.
Excuse me. Let's go. What's unique about southwest Burnsville?
Large lots.
Large lots.
Heavily treat.
Okay, alright.
Presumably, it's an area where you're not gonna see somebody's backyard or maybe even some of the front yards.
Commissioner Thomas, I think you added something on this topic. And then I'll get back to Commissioner Benkey.
So, a ground-mounted system is defined as solar collector base is no more than 30 inches above natural grade.
Yep. That's the base of the collector.
That's the base.
But the panel itself can go up to 15.
Goes above that to a maximum of 15, as it is with a pole.
Yes.
So if you've got a ground-mounted system on a single pole that starts at 30 inches, what do you have?
Yeah. I mean, I think we're...
We wanted to differentiate because most ground systems, well, most ground systems though are gonna be located close to the ground. And that actually, those definitions come straight out of the model ordinance from PCA. It's different than if you have a pole and you're starting that installation at five feet, 10 feet, 15 feet. That's just how to identify a ground-mounted system as opposed to these other types of systems.
Well, I don't think it adequately defines each 'cause a pole could start at 30 inches.
You could use a single pole to mount a panel and the panel could start at 30 and end at 15, and how is it different than a ground-mounted system? It's just simply mounted by a single piece of structure as opposed to multiple legs, for example. You know, I think the point is, is that, I don't know how old the model ordinance from PCA is.
It was just done last year.
Okay. And I think, but I do think that the industry that we're working on here is changing essentially daily.
Correct.
And we're only gonna catch so many things, but yet, how far do we need to take it to, you know, what are we, what's the goal? Do we want to keep them from being above 15 feet? Do we want to keep them from, you know, I think we sort of need to look a little bit at that more.
Commissioner Singh.
Thank you. This is Mr. Chair. Regarding the pole-mounted, I think the way it is drafted here is just say, no. Okay? And I feel that if my lot is backed up to a park or something like that, where there is screening, trees and that kind of thing, or if I'm able to fully screen the pole-mounted structure, why am I not allowed? My yard is big enough, it backs up into a park, and it's not going to be a view of people using the street, and there's no problem with the neighbors. I mean, just say we can't, and I kind of disagree with that. We should be, each applicant should be viewed according to his or her plan to install.
Commissioner Levin and Commissioner Thomas.
I think the idea of pole-mounted can be very easily defeated by having two legs. And now you've got exactly the same thing as if it were a single pole, but it's two legs, so it's no longer a pole-mounted in that sense, is the way I read it, the way I would interpret it. So I'm not sure what we're gaining by saying pole-mounted versus some other overall size, height, or whatever.
Commissioner Thomas.
Okay.
I think what I'm seeing is, let's define the standards. And aesthetically is where we want to define those standards. A pole-mounted versus a ground-mounted is a means and method. You're telling me that I can't build it in a certain way when the goal is to meet an aesthetic standard. So I think we're putting a lot of thought in this, but I think to Commissioner Benkey's point, I don't want to restrict the growth in this industry that might come down six months from now or two years from now. So I think we're kind of telling them the means and methods rather than the results.
Ms. Garros, does that give you some feedback on that topic?
Yes.
Okay. That's kind of our goal, to kind of talk through these.
Oh, exactly, exactly.
So, I think, I think that worked well, so we'll start again with you, Commissioner Benkey, and you bring up a topic and we'll kind of, we'll work through the commission.
And if I'm touching on something that you two have already talked to Ms. Garros about, just stopped me halfway through. On the maximum square footage, I'm wondering if that 200 square feet allows for an adequate yield for a device? And, you know, it's eight-foot high and 25 feet long or 15-foot high by whatever, 15 by 12. But, you know, that's a significant amount of space, but does it allow for an adequate yield for solar devices? I mean, and there again, what's the goal with the 200-square-foot limit?
That is...
It feels a little arbitrary, but I don't know, again, where the... It feels a little arbitrary, but I don't know, again, where that came from.
Sure. It is related to, that's the maximum size for accessory buildings in the R1, so that's where that came from. Ordinances are different as to the amount, but they usually tie them to the principal or accessory building size and height standards, so that's where that came from.
And that makes perfect sense, then, too.
And we can certainly look into-
In those cases, that was just for ground-mounted, correct?
It's just, it does say ground-mounted.
Yeah, just ground-mounted.
In the R1 and R2 only, so, okay.
So if they integrated a panel into the roof, it could be far bigger than 200 square feet. It's just limited to ground-mounted.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify that. Commissioners, any other comments?
Just a clarification, the wall-mounted is not limited to 200 also.
Correct.
Third point in the summary. In all zones, roof-mounted systems cannot cover more than 80% of the total south-facing roof. I would submit that if the product can handle the entire face, wouldn't it look better to cover the entire face of the south-facing roof than to have it end 10% in from each edge?
Ms. Garros, could you give us some background on that? I had that same question. We saw some pretty amazing pictures of where the
Right.
panel was completely integrated into the roof and you, to force them to stop and use a different-
Surface.
I think what the issue is, is really related to solar panels as opposed to the ordinance. I mean, you can have solar-integrated, so if you have the solar-integrated shingles, those types of things, there are not restrictions on that. This is getting at more the solar panels themselves. And in the images that we saw from some of the other guidelines from other communities, that's really where that language came into play.
Okay.
We can certainly modify that.
Let me continue, please, Mr. Chair. That leads into more of the text here, I think, because it is to match the shape and proportion of the roof, cannot have a finished pitch steeper than the existing roof. Presumably, then, it should not have a pitch less than the existing roof. It needs to be flush-mounted, which essentially is saying the same thing as the previous sentence, but it's not to extend more than 12 inches above the roof. Now, to me, flush would mean flush with the surface as opposed to flush on the surface. We're getting into some, I think, construction details here, and I think we're getting back to, maybe there's a way of simplifying some of this text to, you know, under the definitions versus fully-integrated or surface-integrated. Maybe there's something there that already exists, or maybe there's something that we need to do for that.
That standard for the 12 inches is really getting at how high
Sure.
above the roof it can be mounted.
Sure.
So taking into account, you know, rather than having something here and then something mounted, you know, several feet above, 12 inches was common in all the ordinances that we looked at in the MPCA standards.
Sure.
They cannot extend above the roof pitch, so they're limited there.
So you mean the roof peak, or the-
Yes, the peak. I'm sorry.
Okay. But, okay. But, and again, now I'm sort of looking at it from the design side. If I'm trying to design a unit that, this needs to be as high as possible, and I'm mounting a system on the roof, the angle is gonna carry me higher than the peak if I go all the way to flush with the other side. I mean, we're starting to get into a geometry thing here where I think we're gonna start to really, I mean, at what point are, is an application going to be put before us to take a look at the aesthetics, I guess?
Well, I think in this, to me, it's fairly simple. You've got a peaked roof, and you can have your solar panel up to 12 inches above the roof, but it needs to be parallel in line with that,
Sure.
and it cannot extend above the peak.
So you're gonna, so we would have to require somebody to demonstrate in their drawing that the peak that's 12 inches higher than the face of the roof is no higher than the peak horizontally from the roof.
Right.
Okay? And that, of course, is gonna contribute to the 20% variance. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Let's go, as I said, see if they had them on that comment.
Sure.
Commissioner Levin.
That's gonna force very high-pitched roofs in this area. If you're gonna get full solar effect,
Yes.
you're gonna want to be at least a 45-degree solar panel. Most roofs, I don't think, are 45 degrees.
Correct.
So you're either limiting what you can do solar-wise or forcing a new roof design for any kind of retrofit.
That's correct.
Yeah. We'll get, any other questions? Commissioner Thomas? Okay. Commissioner Benke?
If I may. There's a home, there are several homes in Burnsville that were designed with or for solar panels. The closest one to us right now is at the corner of Nicollet and 134th on the southwest corner. It's kitty corner from Sky Oaks. That home was built with solar panels on the south face. The roof is about a 60-degree angle. They were there for years. At a certain point, they deteriorated. The home was sold many times. They were finally removed. They have not been reinstalled. There's a couple of houses over on Judicial that are underground, and they have south-facing roofs that are designed with the angle. That part of it, I think, can be, that's up to the person wanting them, you know, and I think that's why the whole idea that the panel is parallel and flush to the roof, that's part of wanting to put panels on is changing your roofline and doing it in a way that you like. Next part of that, though, is that solar panels today are more effective at less than optimum slopes than they used to be. You can get a lot more yield out of a solar panel at 30 degrees than you used to get at 45. So that's the technology side of it, too. And I think because of that, you can have somebody put full of optiac panels on a standard pole-pitch roof, and they'll do just fine.
I can foresee a series of steps, if you will. One foot high, 45 degree, then right behind it, another one foot high, 45 degree. So it's a sawt, it looks like a sawtooth from the side.
Sure.
Now, is that kind of aesthetic that we'll be forcing? Let's say my house, which has got a low-pitched roof. If I wanted to do solar and I wanted to comply technically, the way this has been stated right now, I could put a series of these little sawtooths to gain maximum solar and still not really be the aesthetics that I think we're looking for.
Ms. Garros, I think we have some, from an aesthetic standpoint, you'd have some zoning issues against that, correct?
Yes, because it also needs to be compatible
With the property.
Yeah, with the adjacent properties and whatnot. For an application like that, we would recommend that come through, conditional use permit be reviewed by planning, commission, and council.
The very next bullet. The aesthetic standards requiring solar systems be designed to complement and not detract from the character of the site and neighboring properties, to blend into the architecture of the building site and landscape to avoid glare buffering and landscaping. Buffering and landscaping are my next comments. You addressed them already.
Anything else?
Yeah.
On that?
Not on that point.
No, I'm sorry. So any other comments, commissioners, on those points? Commissioner Singh.
Following Commissioner Benke, too.
Okay.
One other item, too, is that you can put these also on accessory buildings, and a lot of the applications are on accessory buildings where, you know, you can, you have a lot more opportunity in slope and whatnot. And generally, that's what we've seen in terms of a lot of the, at least local cities in Minnesota where there have been installations, because it's on an accessory building and then-
I remember building a shed, and the builder's shed was solar.
I'm gonna-
I already have a house, and I had a garage in the back.
Yep.
Okay.
Next point, Commissioner Benke.
It should be, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Thomas.
I don't want to make that point.
So, an accessory building, a roof-mounted system
Mm-hmm.
on a accessory building.
Like a shed or detached garage.
Shed, is that limited to 200 square feet then, or is it the 80%?
Yes. That, I believe, would be the 200 square feet also, because it's just following, we drafted the ordinance based on the size standards of accessory buildings.
Okay.
But it can be, it can be either or, or not limited. It's really up to the commission as to what your thoughts are.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benke.
So is the 200 square feet a area of the panels or an area of their footprint on the ground? Or?
It's the panels.
I think it is, too, but-
Yeah, it's the panels.
But I think the accessory structure is 200-square-feet footprint on the ground.
It wasn't how I understood it. I understood it as, and I could be wrong.
Well-
I understood it as the ground-mounted was 200 square feet,
I'm sorry.
which matched an accessory building.
Yep.
If it's on an accessory building, then the standards apply to the building, not the 200 square feet
Yeah, we put it at 80%.
from the ground-mounted.
Yes, I'm sorry.
To Commissioner Thomas's question. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
If it's roof, yep. It would be the 80%, not the 200. The 200 applies to just a ground-mounted.
Commissioner- On that same point, if you have an attached garage, and now you want to put your panels on the, either the roof
Mm-hmm.
or the wall, now, same rules follow as the house, right?
Yes.
So an attached garage is not an accessory building?
No.
Correct.
That's right. That's the one I want to make sure, I'm clear about.
Okay. Commissioner Benke.
My next point was the impervious surface standards, which we've already touched on briefly here, that the standard is 50% of the area, and I think here, again, is it the area of the face or the area of the footprint that the accessory construction covers? Do we know?
Did not get into it, that level. Mr. Thomas had a suggestion for that in looking at, you know, what the, let's see, I don't know if I have it right here, but the horizontal.
Horizontal equivalent.
Yeah, horizontally.
I think that made sense. It just, I wasn't seeing it here, and that's why I marked it.
It's not in there.
Right.
Any other, while Commissioner Benke was on impervious surface, any other questions there?
You must clarify.
Okay. Commissioner Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, this impervious surface, 200 square feet, a solid 200 square feet in a, in some lot, could take up a whole lot of the lot. Doesn't leave, I would like to see something that says, no, this particular section larger than, I'm gonna say arbitrarily, 50 square feet. So there's a gap in between panels so that water can get through.
Good. Commissioner Levy, let's make sure we're talking about a couple of different things. There's a 200-square-foot for a ground-mounted panel.
Right.
We certainly can have anything on a home bigger than that, and the point was just that it counts 50% against impervious surface versus 100%.
Run that back again. That wasn't clear to me. The house, the house, for example, do anything you want on the roof within the guide. Now, I'm gonna put another 200 square feet in my yard.
Doesn't have to be 200 square feet in the yard, correct?
Up to.
Up to.
In my yard. My whole yard is 200 square feet. I'm covering the whole yard now with panels.
I think, wouldn't that start to fall under what the impervious surface for the lot allows?
Partially, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, for example, if you have a house, if you have a lot and you're allowed 50% hardcover, 50% impervious surface, they would test the coverage of the panels against the overall. In other words, you could get to a point on a lot that small where you now exceed the hardcover allowed for the lot.
Okay.
That would not be allowed then.
Okay. I follow that now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benke, you're up next.
Second to the last bullet. Solar energy systems that are not visible from public streets or adjacent properties are permitted. And I wanted to read more after that and find out in our zoning, in industrial zoning, in commercial zoning, or does this take care of our issue with the large lots in southwest Burnsville?
Well, when the, one of the things that the planning commission identified is that if it's, if the system is not visible, and I think the council concurred with this, then let them do whatever they want, kind of a thing.
So that could deal with the issue that we brought up.
Yep.
And essentially, it leaves it with staff to permit it right within the program, and we don't have to deal with it.
Yep. And what we need to do is, that's not consistent throughout the ordinance
Yeah, sure.
that Paul found, so we do need to clean that up.
Sure.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes. I mean, the point I raised early about pole-mounted should go under the same category. Thank you.
I'm moving into the ordinance now. I'm on page four of the ordinance, toward the bottom. Solar energy systems shall not be installed within the floodplain, flood fringe, floodplain, shore-impact zone, bluff-impact zone, wetland, mountain buffer, public waters, or stormwater ponds. What happens if we have an existing residence that by virtue of its age impacts a current, one of these current restrictions? Would they be allowed to add a system that would essentially violate this? Or would it need, or would it need, just simply needed CUP to document its non-conformity?
That, yeah. They would need to do that, yes.
Okay. But it is, it could be allowed, it's just a test of the process.
If it's on an existing structure, yep, we'd look at that as, yep, not conforming, but we would have that come in for review by planning, commission, and council.
Commissioner Thomas.
Just a point of clarification, and we have an E and an E there?
Yep.
Oh.
Caught that. Jim caught that.
Commissioner Levy, did you have?
On that same, three E, there's a large floodplain east of 35 and north of the river. Great big open area. I don't know who owns it, who's responsible for it. That would, you know, we've said there's no place for solar park in Burnsville, but someone may come along in the future and say-
Commissioner Levy, no one's going to build there.
That's-
It's, yeah.
Nothing's going to be built there. No solar panels, no construction.
It's the dumps.
Yeah. It's designated as an area that nothing can, if I'm thinking, I mean, in most cases, to your point about, especially if it's a wetland area that's near Black Dog.
Yeah.
The, you're not gonna be able to put panels down there. You can't put anything down there.
That's been set aside for quite a while.
Yeah. No construction, period.
Okay.
Part of that federal wildlife management area. It's actually owned by Xcel, but they lease it. Yep.
Conceivably, the federal could put in solar panels and exempt.
Actually, for floodplains, not really. I mean, the whole intent for floodplain regulations is not to put in improvements where you can have destruction and then have to, you know, reimburse folks. So floodplains, that one, I think, is pretty clear on that, that you don't want to see improvements. That's why we have to go through conditional use permits even for pipelines that go under the river and whatnot.
So the new power poles that they just put in had to go through some-
They had to go through public, yeah, Public Utilities Commission approval and, yep, like a floodplain as well.
And they removed the old ones, and they put the new ones in, too. It was just a band in the old ones.
I watched that closely.
Yeah.
Commissioner Thomas, anything else?
No, sir.
No, sir. Commissioner Benke?
Page six, number three at the top of the page. And I am wondering, and this, I did make a note on this for when you were talking about it before, why are we totally exempting all installations by government agencies on public order right-ofways? And the reason I'm asking is such a good job was done with the integration of the Transit Center panels. You know, are we just expecting that they're always going to do that good of a job? And I don't think so. Wouldn't we want to have some basic standards that even would apply there?
Well, because we don't have jurisdiction, we can't apply standards.
Makes sense.
I don't quite get that.
I mean, we don't have jurisdiction. That is, if they're in state right-ofway or county right-ofway, they put up their own rightofway, they put up their own signage. You know, we can't restrict what happens in rightofway that's under another jurisdiction. So like, it's a little.
Commissioner Singh, I brought that up.
I had to ask too, you know. It's great that we're all pretty much on the same pages here.
That's one of the things too, that where we didn't want to, we could do a blanket exemption, but we really didn't want to do that because some things, you know, like the city for, in all of our areas where we're in a public easement, but it's private property and whatnot, some of this should apply to the city also.
Right.
We can take a closer look as to what and how to write the provisions. Because right now, it's just kind of, like I said, you have a section for setbacks, which applies, and a section for height and whatnot. And it may make sense to have, you know, certain types of public infrastructure have screening as opposed to, you know, nothing, those types of things. So we definitely can look at that and will look at that.
Commissioner Singh, I brought that up to Ms. Garros. She used my example. I had an issue with, there was six instances in here where the government or city was exempt. And I do struggle with the thought process that if it's on a commercial or it's in a, it's on a public property here at the city complex, and it's not affecting a resident. But I do struggle with the example that I gave Deb, that she brought up, that if Vista View wanted to put some panels right next to the property line in the school district, they would, according to this, would not be held to a standard from a screening standpoint. But if the neighbor across the property line chose to put panels in, they would be held to a different standard from a screening standpoint. And I struggled with that. So she's going to look at that.
I still, I still don't get it. I don't see why they should. I mean, it's part of the city of Burnsville, granted. It's not our city's property, but they should not, people should not, they should not be exempted.
Are you going back, Commissioner Singh, to the comment that Ms. Garros made about the federal rightofway?
That's right.
Okay. Not about my comment about the school.
No, 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 not at all.
So any other question? There are several instances in here where that was stated.
Yep.
So any other comments or discussion based around those topics? I think there was six or seven of them I counted. Total of six, so she's going to look at this. Commissioner Banky, next point.
I had questioned on the same page, under D, the building integrated, no limit to the size of building integrated systems. And I saw that as a fairly simple answer or a simple statement, but it brought questions to my mind again as no limit. Does that mean that if you have it on the roof of a flat roof building, that you can, I mean, if you raise the parapet high enough, you could continue to screen indefinitely? I mean, at a certain point, you're going to run into a height restriction for the city because we do have height limits. But as long as it's screened, then we're essentially saying you can put it as high as you want. I'm reading it from the devil's advocate side.
Well, this is, again, following from planning commission direction. If it's building integrated, let it be. So if you want to see, you know, some limitations or things, then we'll need to add that, and we can certainly research that for you.
I think if we can, unless somebody else says something, I wanted to lead it down to the next one, the aesthetics. And I think that's where this could have limits, that clearly if you are simply adding 15 feet of parapet to hide 15 feet or 20 feet of solar panel, and I know we're getting rather arbitrary with this, but I'm trying to carry it from a design standpoint where somebody could, that would not be aesthetically pleasing. It wouldn't meet the aesthetic standards.
Right.
But that would be something that the DRC presumably, given that that's where we're at now, would see. And I'm assuming that there's a fairly loose trigger with a lot of this stuff in terms of, oops, planning commission.
Yeah, that's really, yep. I mean, we're pretty, if it's outside of parameters where we do not feel comfortable, we make the decision to go to planning commission and council before. It's like, oh, well, let's just kind of get this through.
Sure.
We default to bringing it to planning commission and council.
Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Levy, any comments?
No, sir.
Commissioner Singh, we're back to you.
Not on that.
Not on that, okay.
Six eight, designed to blend in the architecture of the building. I think we've got ourselves back to the architectural design tool essentially here is what constitutes good architecture. And I think it goes to Commissioner Levy's point. Sawtooth roof can work in the right situation. The building over on County Road, McAndrews, and Frontier Court.
Yes.
Has a sawtooth roof.
Mm-hmm.
Again, I think we're back to where's the threshold where the trigger is pulled for architectural review essentially. And does it happen at the single family as rigidly as it does at commercial or industrial, or is it looser? And I don't know how to answer that. I'm just trying to think through.
Well, I'm looking at that the, the idea for the whole ordinance was to allow and to put in the performance standards to help guide.
Right.
In that situation, it's a matter of if you feel that staff at a DRC level, you know, can make those decisions, or if they should be brought, you know, for planning commission review, or under what circumstances. And if we can identify those or clarify those, then we should, then the ordinance.
It just depends on the trigger we're looking for.
Right, right.
From a standpoint of whether the, whether the, you know, our goal always is to get, to have staff handle it.
Correct.
And where is the appropriate trigger to the point of how we're going to move forward and what comes to the planning commission and what can be done administratively.
And I think that comes back to what we're doing now. The more we can think through this, the more parameters we can give you, and the more easier it's going to be on your end to do that.
Exactly.
And then it's going to be easier for the applicants to get through where they know what they're after.
Yep.
They know what we're after.
Definitely so. I mean, if, whatever you suggest, we can incorporate in here, so.
If you have some suggestions there, we could certainly, if you don't have them now, can turn those in to Ms. Garros.
Or think about it, you know, for the next time this comes back.
And then, I apologize, the 100% screen was changed from opaque, and.
Yes.
Is that a standard that's then therefore virtually impossible to meet without a fence?
No, you can do it via landscaping and fence or fence or some type of a wall-type construction.
But doesn't the landscaping have to be 100% screening from day one then? It can't be something that grows up over five years to achieve 100%.
We did, we had to change that as part of making this 100%, that, yeah, that at installation, it needs to be 100% at at least six feet or eight feet, depending on the.
But that is just for ground-mounted systems. I found it interesting, I'm sorry, does anybody?
I don't think anyone else has signaled to want to talk. Commissioner Banky, you have the floor.
B and C have different, have a different standard from what I'm reading here.
Yes, they do. And again, that's from direction from the council.
Okay.
Yep.
So residential has to be 100% screened. Commercial and industrial need to be, well, that's pole-mounted though, buffered. What about ground installations in industrial and commercial?
I think that's one of the ones that Paul had indicated that is not, we do address it, but it's not consistent.
Yeah.
And then what is buffering?
Buffering is what it says it is under the next page, under.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven, yeah.
Okay. I, okay.
Kind of what that means. Trying to get at a situation, every time you do a standard, it makes it harder for somebody and more complex. So it's like, how do you come up with something that's reasonable? And in looking at the other ordinances, some of them did have these buffer, which is, we have a buffer standard for if you've got commercial adjacent to residential. We have some buffer standards. So I just included that as a way, because council too is looking at, let's try to make these things look, well, I mean, you can only go so far. You don't want to make it so it's a situation where the, the system doesn't work or function. But yeah, so that's, that's the first step.
Sure. Well, if I may, on C then, would a commercial lot be required to screen their pole-mounted energy system, to buffer their pole-mounted energy system from an adjacent commercial lot?
Yes. The council felt for poles that those should not be visible, generally speaking. They felt that ground-mounted systems could be visible, but there should be some type of landscaping or something that makes them a little bit.
But even from the same zoning or from a heavier zoning?
Right.
So commercial to industrial, you'd still screen commercial to industrial?
On pole-mounted only.
Well, and then what?
And ground-mounted.
Ground-mounted for landscaping or something there, okay. Under E, I don't just, I don't think this was quite clear that it's responsibility of the owner of the system to address the glare.
Okay.
I mean. And then I went on to page seven.
What happened to D, by the way?
What happened, Commissioner Levy, I'm sorry, what's your question?
A, B, C, D, E, F. Oh, I'm sorry, my, didn't read it right. Nevermind.
Okay. Commissioner Banky, you're going, what page?
Page seven.
Which, which number?
Top of the page, H. What have I, I had a question mark here. Ground mountable from solar include. Oh, this is what, that was just speaking of, that in all zoning, other than residential, something is needed to soften the appearance. And is that, that's different than buffering then?
Well, H is part of the buffering or aesthetics standard.
Right.
Yeah, so we have, yeah. Because I've tried to deal with it. Tried to do the best it can.
Oh, no, 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 I agree. And I'm just, right. And I think what I'm saying, what I'm trying to say is, I see three different levels here.
And that's something, yeah, that's what, what Commissioner Thomas had indicated. So yeah, we definitely, we have to clean, clean that up and make sure it's consistent for the type of installation and also for the, if it's residential versus commercial, industrial, et cetera.
Okay.
Yep, so that H would be one of those.
Page seven.
Those, page seven, I, I think what I was looking at here was the same thing I went back to before with the roof-mounted systems on pitched roofs. Solar panels located in a manner that does not change the roof line or obscure the relationship of a roof to character-defining features such as dormers and chimneys. This basically is, to me, is saying that you can change, you can remodel the roof for solar as long as you do it well from an architectural standpoint.
Yes.
And that's a subjective, that's a subjective decision, whether it's architecturally compatible or not.
Yep.
Number two allows you to put it on the south side when there's no other option. That's pretty clear, I think. I think again here on three, roof-mounted systems that are visible from the nearest edge of public rightofway shall not have a highest finished pitch steeper than the roof pitch on which the system is mounted and shall not be higher than 12 inches above the roof. But isn't that the flush again, that essentially we're saying that the roof system needs to match the pitch of the roof to blend in?
Yes.
Okay.
Parallel to the roof.
But I, yeah, I mean, I think we're saying, we're trying to say that with a lot more words than maybe we need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not full.
Lubervose.
I think that some of that will come out.
Yeah, I really.
Once we restructure the ordinance.
No, I agree, and I'm just trying to walk all the way through. Yeah, and then five, mounted parallel to the plane. So now we've repeated ourselves essentially. And systems shall be installed below the ridgeline of the pitch roof. I think that probably is the best way to say it can be no higher than the pitch of the roof. Under L, power transmission lines, all power transmission lines from the solar energy system to any building or other structure shall be located underground. To any building, wouldn't that, I mean, a panel on the building, you're not going to be able to get underground to come back into the building. I mean, from an accessory building to the main building, I can see that making sense.
We require all utilities to be placed underground.
Right.
For that.
Right. It's just that that, that initial from the building, from the building itself down, you know, you're just going to go straight in the building.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And there's a provision in here, I think I read in the background, that they need to be painted. Then if they're on the building, they need to be painted to match the building prior to going below ground.
Yeah, I would imagine that they should be.
Yep, that can.
In a conduit or something, but that conduit, okay. Number seven, buffering, again, I'm still questioning the buffering compared to the other, the other two. And then page eight.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Levy.
On buffering, we talk about, we talk about opaque and court defied or is uncared about that. How does translucent, is that considered opaque?
We don't know. It's a judge that can't figure that out.
Commissioner Lever, we're going with 100% screen. Commissioner Banky.
It seemed like it should be self, yeah, but it wasn't.
It's not.
Marion Webster.
Well, it should be. Under number eight, I think there was syntax, minor syntax. Solar energy systems may be mounted on poles, the ground, roof, or wall. That's just a minor issue. Easements, solar energy systems shall not encroach on public drainage utility rightofway or trail easements unless installed by the government agency with jurisdiction. So this is what we were talking about. So you can't even get a permission. I mean, this is sort of eliminating the encroachment, or once again, if you had a, if you had the ability to encroach by virtue of a grandfathered building or something else, it would simply have to be memorialized.
Not if it's in an easement. There are specific purposes for easements, so, yeah, no.
But.
It says easement, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, because none of these would have a building on them.
Correct.
And if there's no building, there's no, okay, okay. That's it.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Commissioner Singh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Ms. Garros, thanks for doing a great job putting this together. I know we.
It's a first hand.
We did work on it earlier when the city council worked on it and gave you the task of bringing it to us, putting it together and bringing it to us. Wonderful job, very, very good work indeed. I don't see, are we going to bring this back for review, once it's accepted by the city council, like for example, in a year or two years, depending on, you know, the citizenry of Burnsville? If we have a lot of people making requests for this, do we need to look at it and probably revisit and make improvements to it?
Usually if we have, you know, a number of requests about the same things, we usually bring that forth to planning commission at the time of your work plan to go back. The council has, however, also approved ordinances and said, you know, we want to review this, bring this back in X amount of time.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. This is so new. This is so new, and it's something that people are getting, starting to get involved in, in energy preservation and alternative energy. And I'm wondering, I'm going to suggest that, Mr. Chair, that we put someplace in here that it be brought back for review. If there is, it's fine, it's okay, but be brought back, I would say, in two years?
Yeah, Commissioner Singh, I think we could probably look at something, because I think we could put some math numbers to, in a two-year period, we look at the sheer number of applications that have come through the city from a standpoint of, was it handled administratively, or did it have to come to the planning commission? And I guess I would like to just have a look at that, because if it, if, if we had 25 applications come through in a period of time, and it, we handled everything administratively, I think we've kind of hit the mark. I think if we've, if there's been a fair amount of issues, no different than what Ms. Garros, she's. Garros, she said from the standpoint of how it comes in front of us, if there's a lot of issues or there's things that have got to be changed, then I think we've got to figure out a way to bring it back to us. We may have missed the mark.
Mr. Chair, what you said makes sense. If we are not going to include anything in the ordinance here about further review, once it's accepted by the city council, further review by the planning commission, then I would ask that staff put in a tickle file the same thing, that after so many, so much time has passed, and they look at it, and there's, there are things that came up within the time, that time period that need our attention, that they be brought back.
To Commissioner Benke's point, I mean, this is a fast-moving technology, and a year from now, that we may have, there may be several things that have made some stuff in the ordinance outdated. Commissioner Thomas, do you have any other comments?
No.
Commissioner Levy?
I have one question. In J, unsafe or inoperable, inoperative systems.
There's a couple of sections where there's a J, what section?
On page eight, I believe.
It's capital J.
Yeah, capital J, page eight. Number two, if a system remains non-functional and inoperative for a period of 12 months, who determines this? I mean, it's sitting there, I don't know that it's not being used or it's inoperative. Who's going to determine, okay, 12 months is going by?
We have an inspections division that may come up with that, and it'll typically, it might not surface at all, and it might be there for, but if there's an issue where there's an inspection, then they're going to see when it was operated last and then kind of follow through some processes. The city's typically not going to go looking for that. But this is just a provision that if an inspection is done and found that it's inoperable, that we've got something in the ordinance to deal with.
So an inspection for some other reason?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think some inoperative systems would be obvious.
Yeah.
And others would not.
They'll fail. I mean, visually, they fail.
Right. I mean, a photovoltaic, you, how would you know unless you, the electrical inspector stopped in? So you're absolutely right, but I don't see, is that, that, this is really more of a tool for the city to work with the landowners, the device owners, to get them to just remove the-
I think the inspection department has the machinery to take care of this with their notices and that kind of thing, so.
Ms. Garros, we did publish a public hearing. Do we, we need to hold a public hearing and leave it open, or what is the procedure for us this evening going forward, since the staff's going to look at it?
That's what I would recommend. I would recommend that you open the public hearing for any public comment, and then that be continued to the February, I can't get here somewhere. If I can find it, or did I leave it over there? To your first meeting in February.
This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to come and give us their feedback on our zoning changes for the solar energy ordinance, to please step forward and give us your thoughts. Unfortunately, seeing no one, at this time, I will not close the public hearing, and we will continue it to our first scheduled meeting in February.
February eighth, I believe.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Garros.
Thank you, everybody.
That brings us to number four on our agenda this evening for updates, commissioners. Does anyone have any updates for the commission this evening? Hearing none, I would stand for anyone for a motion for adjournment.
Absolutely.
Moved by Commissioner Benke, second.
Second.
By Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose nay-nay, and the motion carries. Thank you, and have a very good evening.